All right, good afternoon. Can you hear me okay if you're in the back row? All right. Well, thank you for being here at our public information session. I'm Kathy Garcia and I get to welcome you to CPS Energy's headquarters and particularly our Board of Trustees meeting room. With me today is our Chief Legal Officer and General Counsel, Shanna Ramirez. And we just wanted you to enjoy this session. It is designed to give you a clear understanding of what it means to be a CPS Energy Board of Trustee. We're going to talk about the responsibilities, the time commitment, and the impact you can have. I'll begin by providing an overview of CPS Energy and then Shanna's going to come up and talk a little bit more about the specific details of being a board member. And then afterwards, we'll open it up to questions. By the end of the session, we hope that you'll leave well informed and perhaps even inspired to go ahead and imply if you haven't already, or perhaps tell somebody, your neighbor or friend, to consider it as well. But before we begin, as it is customary at CPS Energy, for us, we always start with a safety message. So Heather's going to come up and offer that and then we'll get underway.
I'll review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the PA system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door to exit outside and verbally alert others. We'll move through the main parking lot in front of the building or the AT&amp;T parking lot at the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and will notify the appropriate emergency services. Lastly, we'll also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to ensure we are prepared. I do ask that you please stand for an invocation. We thank you for the many blessings we have freely given, you have freely given to each of us. We ask that your presence guide us through this meeting, provide us with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed to discuss business matters today. Help us to all remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask in your name, amen. Finally, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So for my part of this presentation, I'm pleased to walk you through a brief but meaningful look at how we serve, who we serve, what drives our work, and where we're headed. I'll also share a bit about our leadership and our governance and how, as customers, you can stay connected and informed with our utility. So this slide provides some great data points and I'll just highlight a few. We are the largest municipally-owned utility in Texas. We are the largest municipally-owned electric-natural gas combination utility in the nation. So in other words, we're an electric and a natural gas business. We're two businesses under one roof. It takes roughly 3,600 dedicated employees to run and operate this utility. We serve nearly 950,000 electric customers and of those, we have 389,000 natural gas customers. We're also, as you can see on the screen here, we're very proud of our credit ratings. That's a strong reflection of our financial strength. And then speaking of finances, as a board member, you're helping to oversee a municipally-owned utility that sets rates to cover its costs. Your role as a board member comes with the duty to act in the best financial interests of the public, ensuring money is used responsibly. This slide shows sources of and uses of our funds. You can somewhat think about it like you do maybe your own household budget. You have income and you can compare that to expenses. So our utility sets rates based on how much it costs to operate and the rates are designed to recover specifically those costs. There are about 70 municipally-owned utilities in Texas and they're structured in various ways. CPS Energy is what we call a vertically, a fully-integrated utility. And what that means is that we own and operate most of our power generating facilities. We own and operate the poles and wires that are used to transmit power and we directly serve and bill retail customers for their energy use. So narrowing down, looking at generation, this slide depicts where our power sources are located throughout Texas. This is where we get our power from. And you can see that different areas of the state are better suited for different types of generation. This slide includes our new natural gas plants that we acquired in Laredo and Corpus Christi. It also shows the South Texas Project, as we call STP, which is a nuclear power plant that we are also part owners of. And of course, this also shows various sites for wind and solar power. So while we just looked at geographically where our generation is located, this slide provides a detailed breakdown of the types of power we generate and their respective proportions within our portfolio. And as you can see, we have it all. We have wind, solar, batteries, coal, natural gas, and nuclear. So we call this an "all of the above" approach and it helps to balance cost, reliability, and sustainability by leveraging the strengths of multiple and different types of energy sources. Now this slide also shows that we are owners of coal. As part of our generation plan that was previously approved by our board, we will be converting one of our coal units to natural gas in 2027 and we'll be retiring the other coal power plant in 2028. So that will actually phase out coal from our generation portfolio. I'd also like to highlight, we are number one in Texas for solar generation and among the top public power wind energy buyers in the country. We are actually the fourth-largest generator provider, generation provider in ERCOT. You'll hear me say ERCOT and I'll come back to that momentarily. So CPS Energy, again, I'm going to go back to the fully-integrated model, business model that we are. Talked about generation, so this is going to be a bit about our transmission and distribution side of the business. We are a transmission and distribution utility, what we call a TDU. When we speak of transmission, this refers to the high voltage transmission lines that carries power, electricity over long distances, such as from power plants over to substations. Sometimes we'll think about this as the highway. And then we have the distribution system, which takes electricity from those substations over to, it brings it down in terms of lowering the voltage and passes it over to individual customers, to homes and businesses. So you can think about that as compared to the highway, the big lines. These are smaller lines and it's almost like the local roads. So CPS Energy is both a transmission and distribution provider and this slide reflects data points that are specific to that line of work. CPS Energy is the sixth-largest transmission provider in ERCOT. So you've heard me mention that we are a combination utility, both electric and natural gas. This slide focuses on our natural gas business. We are a local distribution utility, which means for the most part, we pick up natural gas from our city gate, so at the city line, and we deliver it directly to homes and businesses and other end users. We have some natural gas transmission lines and a whole lot of natural gas distribution lines. And we are the fourth-largest local distribution company in the state. Again, I'm just trying to reinforce that we are sized rather large. So you've heard me mention ERCOT. ERCOT is an acronym that stands for the Electric Liability Council of Texas. And ERCOT is actually two things. It's a geographical area in the state where there is a shared connection, connected transmission grid that transmits electricity to customers. And you can see on this slide here that ERCOT is most of Texas, but not all of Texas. ERCOT is also a nonprofit corporation that manages the grid and the sale of electricity over it with regulation by the Public Utility Commission and various state laws. We participate in ERCOT both as a generator and as a transmission owner-operator. So again, reflecting back on the fully-integrated utility, I've spoken about generation, spoken a little bit about transmission and distribution, and now we'll look at our customers. So when we talk about our customer base as a utility, it's important to recognize the wide range of individuals and organizations that we serve. They each have distinct needs, they have different usage patterns, and they have different service expectations. This slide reflects what are the more common or main categories of customers. And for us, understanding the diversity of our customer base helps us to tailor our services. It helps us to offer help to those customers that may be in need. It helps us to improve customer satisfaction and to plan for future infrastructure and resource needs. So to dive into this just a little bit deeper, this slide shows the range of programs we offer to help customers manage their utility bills. From low-income discount rates and payment plans to energy efficiency support, these programs are essential to ensuring that everyone has safe, reliable access to electricity and gas. I might take just a quick moment to point out that out in the foyer area, you'll see a CPS Energy table and we have a member of our Customer Response Unit. We set up tables like that at different town halls. Any opportunities were given across the community so that customers can learn about these programs and the different plans that we have. So we have that set up for you here today if you'd like to learn a little bit more. And continuing with our proactive outreach to help customers, we have partnerships with over 200 agencies or organizations in our community and many of them are highlighted on this slide. I'll take just a second to point out those. Can't fit all 200 on there, but it's an impressive partnership that we have across the community. Also try to think about it as a one-stop shop. So all this information covered so far is being conducted within a rapidly evolving energy landscape. And to navigate this landscape effectively, it's critical that we utilize both a short-term planning process as well as a long-term process. On the screen now, we have our Vision 2027. And that has really helped us to be agile, to be responsive to customer desires and needs, and to align to near-term actions with approved budgets and resources. So this is the quicker action, what we're, the here and the now that we are acting and executing to. This plan has helped us to set a foundation for longer-term transformation. So then we look at our Horizon 2050. So at the same time we're executing to Vision 2027, we have our Horizon 2050, which is a long-term plan to set our vision for the future. It's really how we prepare for deep changes that may take years to realize. And in a complimentary fashion, these strategic plans help us manage risk, drive performance, and build a stronger future for our customers. So all this work that is guided by these strategic plans comes together under our utility leadership. This slide highlights our current Board of Trustees. And their leadership, their foresight, and honestly, deep sense of responsibility are what keep us focused on our mission. And then we have our senior leadership team, which is led by our President and CEO, Rudy Garza. Steering a utility through today's rapidly-changing energy environment requires not just expertise, but a vision, resilience, and a deep commitment to our customers and our community. I do believe that public service is at the core of what we do and I will say that I have the pleasure of watching this team lead by example. They are public servants at heart. And most governing decisions rest with our leadership and with our Board of Trustees. We are fortunate to have our Community Input Committee, which is an advisory committee that consists of 19 members from the community and they provide input and feedback on various operations and programs that our utility offers. And they serve as a vital bridge between the utility and the public, helping ensure that the community's voice is heard and they offer recommendations to the board. There are a few items which are listed on the slide, which we must go to City Council for. And those items are any issuance of debt, so we do have our own board, but when we are going to issue debt, we issue that under the, with the approval and under the umbrella of our owner, the City of San Antonio. The use of eminent domain, so we try to work with landowners, et cetera, as best we can, but we have to seek the authority to use eminent domain from the City Council. Again, it's an authority, but not necessarily something that's always used, but just an authority that we have to get from the city. Any adjustments to retail rates, so that's approved by our board and then also by our City Council. And then the council confirms our board nominees. So lastly, we wanted to share some ways that you as customers can stay connected with your utility if you're not already aware. Up on the screen, there are a variety of forums and avenues for you to receive information about the ongoings about your utility. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shanna and she's going to talk a bit more about the specifics of serving as a board member.
Thank you, Kathy. And welcome, everyone. I just want to start by saying thank you. As Kathy mentioned before, this is, this truly is public service. So the willingness to take your time and learn about being a trustee and considering being a trustee is something that I just have to say thank you very much for. It's something that's absolutely necessary. And it's a, it's a lot for a volunteer position. So I'm going to walk you through some of the, some of the roles and responsibilities that we have for our trustees. Just a quick overview, trustees are selected from four quadrants. I know this can be a little bit confusing, but trustees do not represent a specific quadrant. They are simply required to be selected from four separate quadrants. And then once selected as trustees, all of our customers and all of our stakeholders are the folks that you have a fiduciary obligation to. The mayor is an ex officio member, which simply means that holds the position as trustee because of the position of mayor. Our trustees are selected from our at-large trustees, so the remaining trustees select the new trustee coming in. And all of our trustees have voting positions. As Kathy mentioned a little bit before, the Board of Trustees is the governing body for CPS Energy. And that is a little bit different from some other, some other ways that other folks do it. And what is the role of the governing body? Really, it's to make sure that there's future viability and long-term success of the organization, to make sure that there is proper oversight of all of the functions, and to make any rules or regulations that govern electric and gas service, including our customer terms and conditions or the payment requirements. I say all of this to note that that is distinguished from what has been delegated to the CEO and the management team, and that's the daily maintenance and operation of our system, which is what we refer to as our gas and electric systems. In terms of the board composition, we talked about the four quadrants. Those are geographical boundaries. They're actually set by City Council. They're designed to have equal representation in each quadrant. And really, the idea was pretty straightforward and self-explanatory. Geographic diversity in the selection of our trustees. As I mentioned, once you become a trustee, you then still represent all of the people from all of the quadrants. Right now, Chair Romero is the trustee that was selected from the Northwest Quadrant. Trustee Steen was selected from the Northeast Quadrant. And if you're not here about possibly looking at that one, you're at the wrong meeting. Just quietly sneak out in the back. Vice Chair Mackey was selected from the Southeast Quadrant and Trustee Gonzalez was selected from the Southwest Quadrant. You will note that this covers all of our service territory. So again, as we start to talk about Quadrant Two, just make sure that that's where you're at. And when we talk about what the board authority is, it's referred to as a sovereign board. So the City Council has delegated all of the authority as CPS Energy's owner to run the system. They've delegated all of that to the Board of Trustees, except for those four specific areas that Kathy talked about before. All of the things it needs to do to manage and operate the system. I say that again because this is different than a lot of city boards and in fact, it's different from our sister municipal entities here in San Antonio. The SAWs Board is organized differently. I'm not, I have a feeling that attorneys had a hand to play in this, but I'm not sure why we're all organized differently. We are. We try to keep things as consistent as possible. We're all still municipal entities, but they're all done a little bit different. And the critical thing to remember is in some cases, boards are advisory in nature. In our case, it's a governing board. When we look at the responsibilities of the trustees, I would say that, you know, some of the most critical are listed here. To lead in partnership with the President and CEO in executing the company's vision, okay? Reviewing and approving our strategic and business plans that keep our day-to-day operation on track for that long-term success we talked about. Establishing and confirming that our policies are appropriate to get us there in that long-term vision. The board is very much involved in succession planning at the highest levels of the organization. And they set the performance standards for the President and the CEO and then they monitor his or her performance. The CEO is the Board of Trustees' sole employee. So all of the employment responsibilities you would have for an employee, the board has for the CEO. All of the rest has been delegated to the CEO. There are a number of large financial transactions. It may be a financing agreement or a procurement, but we have policies that set out the review authority and for the most part, what the, I guess what the public sees the most of is for general services, over $10 million, all procurements go to the Board of Trustees for approval. So if you watch a board meeting and you see them approving at different financial levels, that's largely what you see, but also in that issuance of any debt or in acquiring other facilities, they also approve those. They're also, the board also has a role in the oversight of risk mitigation, making sure that we're doing what we can do to avoid the risks that are known to our enterprise. They are responsible for setting the tone of ethical, I would say, and professional behavior to preserve the public confidence and to our enterprise. It is essential that our customers see transparency in what we are engaging with in our business, that they feel involved and heard in the decision-making. We are a community-owned asset, so this is essential and the board members play a huge role in establishing and maintaining the relationships with all of our various stakeholders and with the public in general to ensure that that level of confidence is maintained. In thinking about all of the different stakeholders that we have, there are, all of our regulatory and compliance agencies that are stakeholders. Our city owner and regulator is a huge stakeholder. We have businesses of varying sizes, the most common of which is a small business here in San Antonio. That is our most, the highest number of businesses are small-owned businesses. And then we have our retail customers. When we think about all of the input that our trustees have to receive and, voluntary or not, consider in making their decisions, it is essential that the customer consideration is always put at the highest priority. Board members are expected to understand, know, and follow applicable laws. There is a lot of help in the education up in the process. CPS Energy is subject to the Open Meetings Act and the Open Records Act and lots of fun stuff that you would get to learn in this position. There is no requirement that you have experience on a public entity board, but I would encourage all of you to take a look at the Open Meetings Act and the Open Records Act to understand what you might be considering because a lot of the requirements are aimed at doing things well within the view of the public. And so a lot of what we do is subject to the public saying, "I want to see everything about this," or "I want to hear everything about this." And so I encourage you to read up on that and understand, understand that. We will give you all the education that you need when you get here as a trustee on a whole bunch of other topics. And again, promoting trust among our stakeholders is critical for our trustees. When you look at the preferred qualifications, one of the things that we aim for in filling our board positions is to get the greatest amount of diversity as possible. And I say that, when I use the word diversity, I mean where you come from, what's your life experience, what did your education look like, what jobs have you done, what experiences have you learned from that? Every version of different experience is beneficial to this board because we represent the entire public of our community, which as all of you know, as members of that public, is very broad and very diverse. We do want people to have some strategic planning and management experience. That can look like a whole bunch of different things. Some business experience in pretty much one of any fields, because if you look at the way they're broken out, that can be almost anything. You do need to have sufficient financial expertise to understand basic financial reporting, various financing options, and some commercial transactions. Corporate governance experience and understanding the role of corporate or municipal entities is very much preferred. That may look very different. You don't have to have been on the government entity. If for instance, you have been active in, and then name one of any sort of municipal entities that is, that is in our community. The, you know, I'm trying to think of what are various committees that you might have had. Yeah, Housing Authority experience is always a good one. That is experience that you can build too. So again, I don't want to scare you off if you don't have that. There is no requirement that you have electric or gas utility experience. Understanding of what corporate governance looks like, what the role of a trustee is versus the role of management, those are two very different things. Again, I think this is one that you can build. Basic skills with leadership, management, and communication. In terms of both written and verbal communication, you will be tested to your limit as a trustee. People will legitimately come to you as the first person they're talking to at CPS Energy about something that they are very passionate about, whether it is in a positive spirit or whether they've had a very bad experience. And your communication skills are going to be essential in understanding their concern, ensuring them that we want to hear about the concern and that we'll address the concern. General business aptitude and acumen, and then there is a preferred educational background. But again, there are some listed, but I would say it's pretty, it's pretty diverse in what can be there. In terms of our board composition, again, the mayor is an ex officio but voting member. And the mayor is there, I know this is confusing, but the mayor is charged with a duty and responsibility of keeping our City Council informed of what we do. So when the mayor sits as a trustee, the mayor's fiduciary duty is to our stakeholders and our entity, not the city, when the mayor is sitting here as our trustee. The trustees, again, as I told you, you're selected from a specific quadrant, but then you have a fiduciary obligation to everyone. You have to be a permanent resident of Bear County. You must reside in Quadrant Two. You have to be a U.S. citizen. The term, the initial term is for five years and you can be selected for a second term. And there is a compensation or a stipend that comes at $2,000 a year and then $2,500 for the chair. That is taxable as earnings to you. When we talk about filling a board appointment, what the process look like? Applications are submitted. The remaining trustees select a nominee. The board does have a nominations committee right now. That is Trustee Steen and Chair Romero. So all of the applications are submitted. Management does a couple of things to make sure that you met the minimum requirement. So we confirm that your address is in the quadrant. We confirm that you're a U.S. citizen and that you have shown us that you're a permanent resident of Bear County. And then the nomination And then the nominations committee looks at the applications. And the full group of applications, and I believe we're in the mid twenties right now in terms of number of applications that we have received, are scoped down into a set of finalists that then go to the full board for consideration. There is no set number that it's shrunk down to. I will tell you that the last time we did this, we had a little over thirty, a little over thirty applications. That was shrunk down to about a group of 11. And then interviews were held with about half of those 11, and then the board considered a smaller group, four, for the final selection. The board then votes, and it's by majority vote of the, the other trustees, that a trustee is, is selected. And then, once confirmed by a majority vote by our board, that name is then submitted to the city council that confirms the appointment in a public vote. I am thinking back from the past, let's call it 2025 years. I cannot recall an appointee not being approved by the city council. So generally, that has, that has gone, that has gone well. But I say all of this to you because it is, it is a public process. So the interview is, is often done at least some part in a, in a public setting. You should expect public discussions about your qualifications to be a trustee, and then you should expect it here at the board and at city council. So again, letting you know that for awareness. And that is, that is really the, the information that I have today. But we're going to give you all an opportunity to ask questions, and then we have some closing comments. So now is simply your opportunity to ask whatever questions that y'all have. Yes, sir?
I was just about DNO insurance coverage for trustees. Do you have that designed kind of public entity-specific policies?
Yes, and yes. We keep an eye on the amounts for our DNO coverage.
Shannon, I don't think everybody heard the question.
Oh, thank you.
So we're gonna, we're gonna check.
One more time.
Sure. I was asking about DNO coverage, so director and officer coverage for trustees. If, Shannon, you could talk a little bit maybe just about the details of that or limits or exclusions, tails.
Absolutely. So it, the amount and the policy is approved every year by the Board of Trustees, so it's always subject to review, but we do have DNO coverage. It is, does cover, I would say it's pretty standard DNO coverage. It covers all of your acts, duties, conduct in the course of your role as a trustee. I, again, cannot recall in the past, let's call it again 25 years, that's about the limits of my knowledge, anybody naming our trustees in a suit. So that's the good news. I will follow up with you on the limits and sublimits, because I don't know this off the top of my head. But I would say, on the whole, we look at them every year and have always been successful in coming to an agreement. The management team, the finance team, looking at what the premiums would be and coming to an agreement of what the, what the appropriate level should be. So I will follow up on, with that on limits and sublimits.
Yes, you mentioned some differences between some other San Antonio boards. Does this board, are they involved in the hiring of, let's say, like the financial consultant for the pension board? Are we involved in those decisions, or is that sublimated to, to, I guess, just the executives in those?
I hope this is good news. Mostly, no. So sometimes, well, let's start. First of all, the, when it comes to our procurement, we are covered by the Texas Government Code, which sets, which sets out the rules that municipal entities have to use for procurement. We set the threshold right now for general services at $10 million, as I mentioned. So some of those selections come up because of the dollar threshold. But overall, the actual, what I would say is the day-to-day running operation, maintenance, and decision-making of, of running our business is left to the management.
Just to, you know, I saw the materials also talking about, but do you expand a little bit on the demands as far as a trustee, as far as, I know there's monthly meetings, but the, you know, anticipated preparation, you know, all that type of, just a better understanding of the position?
Absolutely. And I'm actually borrowing from our chair's comments that she provided at the first meeting. So this is her perspective. I happen to agree, and she apologizes that she couldn't be here today. She noted that, that there's really two answers. One is a regular trustee, and one is when you're chair. So first, I'll talk about when you are a trustee. There is one meeting a month, and the materials are provided to you ahead of time. And our meetings generally last about a half a day. And so I would say that one day a month in terms of preparation and attendance at the board meetings is what you should count on. There are then seven board committees. There's two trustees on each of the committees, with the exception of our risk management committee, which is a committee that happens to be made up of all of the trustees, so it is treated like an open meeting. All of the other subcommittees are not subject to the Open Meetings Act because they don't contain a quorum, and they're advisory in nature. So there are two trustees. Depending on what your stated interests and expertise are, you could be on as, if you wanted to be on as many committees as possible, you could be on all of those. All trustees will at least be on the risk committee. So depending on how many committees you have, those also each meet at least once a quarter. I would say for most of them, it's between once a quarter and once, every two months. So those are, again, not open to the public, so your preparation might look a little bit different, but do generally contain more education background and deep dive information. So there's more material to review, but those meetings are also a little bit shorter. So I would say, consider one meeting a month and one or two committee meetings on top of that. So I'm at three days a month right now. We encourage our trustees to attend community events, and we set up a lot of events that allow for our trustees to engage with folks like our local, local government stakeholders, our state and our federal stakeholders. And so you might, if you desire, to attend those events as well. So to me, it's not a lot of time. Now, when you get to-
Shannon, can I, real quickly, on the committees, the mayor only serves on the risk committee. So when you think about there being seven committees, there's four of you that are spread across those seven committees. So, I mean, it, it does take some time and commitment to prepare for those meetings as well.
Absolutely. And then, the way our board has operated in the past, the roles of vice chair and chair rotate through the trustees. They are confirmed by a majority vote of the trustees, but generally, it has rotated around. So in your five-year term, you will have the opportunity to serve as chair and as vice chair. When it comes to being a chair, the current chair noted, it does take a lot more time. You do engage with the CEO on a lot more information, and it's substantially more time.
I'll also add that leadership management does send information to our board periodically when, when there's something that needs to be shared, informed, transmitted. So you may, as a board member, receive board communications that are alerting you to something but doesn't necessarily require action or a board meeting. So you are receiving, I would say, a routine amount of information about the utility and its daily ongoings, as is.
First of all, thank you for your service. I'm sure it can appear thankless at times. But we, I certainly appreciate it and, you know, all, keeping, keeping the lights on here, I think you do a pretty good job. Just a couple of questions. One is, where can I get a slide, the slide that you showed about generating capacity? Because in the information that I've looked at, it's, it's not really, I mean, there's some generalities about it, but about what's being added and what's being shut down, but just the, kind of the split between the, the baseload generating capacity and then the renewables and how they're, you know, right now, it looks like they're backed up by, you know, 50/50 batteries and peakers. But if I could, is there, is that information available?
I believe so. I'm hesitating because I'm wondering if it is the most recent generation plan slide that's posted on our website, or if-
I know it's been part of board presentations. So what I would say, and those are all posted publicly on the website, but what I will say is, we could take a little bit of time to see if we can help find that, because it may be a little tricky to find and which board meeting it was presented.
Well, I'm glad they're flexible, because the world's changing. And I guess the, the second question is, how granular does the, do the board's decisions, how granular are they? You know, you missed, you mentioned the risk committee. Does the board get into hedging decisions and things like that? That's it. Thank you.
Absolutely. So I think that, yes and no. See, that's what, you and you guys get a lawyer, that's what you get. So I think at the committee level, there is a ton of education about how management makes certain decisions. And there is always an ongoing discussion of, what do you think about the way we make decisions? Do you think we should make decisions differently? With respect to hedging in particular, there is no board committee that is assigned to approve our hedging decisions, but we do have a specific governing committee within our organization that makes those decisions. And given the level, the level of the transaction, it determines whether or not we go to the board. Again, in particular, if we are making fuel purchases, those all fall within the purview of our, the, the committee that does the fuel purchases. However, I cannot think of a major or material transaction that we have ever entered, regardless of whether the board is required to approve it, that we have not run by the board to make sure that they agree it matches our short-term and long-term strategy.
I'll echo his sentiments about thanks for your service. And I'm just wondering along those same lines, like, what type of information would we have access to? Would it be like, I would speak a couple of, would it be employee reports, or would it be, would we have access to consultants' reports too? And do we sort of look at one entity's report, or can we do a broader range of reports?
So I would say, with respect to the decisions you are required to make, which are very broad, I cannot think of a whole lot of information that you would not have access to if you wanted it. We absolutely hire consultants and subject matter experts to advise us on projects, day-to-day business, things from employee benefits issues to-
Audit.
Yes, audit, audit services, financial transactions. And we, there, if you wanted to look at those reports, you would, you get an awful lot of them anyway. I can't recall in, again, that 25-year past, a trustee saying they didn't get enough information. Plenty have said, "Please stop sending me so much information." But you absolutely have purview into it. I always warn people, and this is, I'm fairly conservative as a lawyer, be careful what you look at, because once you've looked at it, anyone could say you were considering that and making another decision. But there is, there's no real limit to what you can see once, once you're here, because it all rolls into how management is making our decisions, what we're recommending to the board. We try to be as absolutely transparent as we can be. There are some limitations in terms of information that is competitively sensitive, or, for instance, an employee's protected private information, or a customer's protected private information. But in terms of the business information that we use to make decisions, absolutely.
I was thinking more in terms of forecasts, so do we have a staff forecast or?
Yes. And so then the, the follow-up question was, in terms of forecasts, and I'm assuming that you mean generation and load demand forecasts, we absolutely use a lot of public information and a lot of expert consultant information, and that is information that we discuss an awful lot with our board and with everyone else right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. So what are some examples of the performance goals that the board has of the CEO? Just curious.
Oh, absolutely. This is a, this is a pretty easy one to answer, because there is a CEO scorecard. So the CEO scorecard looks an awful lot like the enterprise scorecard, and it mirrors it in many ways, but there is a separate CEO scorecard and an enterprise scorecard that sets the metrics on which each is respectively measured in terms of their performance. We report on an annual basis to our board and to the public on how the enterprise performed against its, its metrics. And then the CEO, just like every other employee in our enterprise, undergoes a annual review and a mid-year review, has annual goals, and then measured against those goals in the CEO scorecard. And there is a personnel committee, which covers the CEO setting of metrics and evaluation of, of his or her performance every year.
I guess, without going into full explanation of open records laws and stuff, how do you manage communications with board members, given those limitations? I mean, do you set up a separate email accounts or stuff like that, or?
We work with our trustees to try to do what, what works for them. So for a lot of our trustees, we have an email that I would imagine that they are using for these communications only. I am guessing that the idea is, that's the only thing that goes in this email. A lot of our trustees are still working, and frankly, our trustees have different opinions, though some trustees use their regular work email to communicate about CPS Energy business. Some have a dedicated business. I would say that in general, when you're discussing CPS Energy business, you are subjecting that mode of communication to review under the Open Records Act. And so, for instance, I don't communicate on any other email other than my work email or texts from any other phone besides my work phone. You'd be horribly bored if you actually went through my texts to see on my personal phone. It would be a lot of pictures of my cat and my kid, but I still don't want to turn it over, so I limit it, and I encourage other people to do that. It's easier to manage, and it lowers your, your risk.
I'm going to follow up on the CEO scorecard. Excuse me. You know, that's a fairly formal process and can be fairly disastrous. Let me frame the question as a statement. I presume there's more informal communication that happens fairly continuously, so that if either the board as a whole's expectations are shifting and some changes need to be made, or the CEO needs to say, "Hey, wait a minute. You know, these goals we set out aren't working for me. That can be changed." Is that the case?
Absolutely. I think you hit on something that, for folks that have been in the workforce, I, as an employment lawyer, I hope everybody has learned, performance evaluation should be a daily discussion, and it is with the CEO, whether he likes it or not. I would say that there is a portion of a lot of public board meetings where his performance is discussed, where board members express their expectations, their areas where they like things that are happening on projects and don't like things that are happening on projects. I know that our CEO makes a standing offer to all the trustees that he will meet with them one-on-one as regularly as they would like to, to discuss their concerns about our long-term strategic plan and his execution against those plans. So it is absolutely much more formal than the two meetings that, that I referenced. And our CEO right now certainly seeks input from every board member, whether they're on the personnel committee or not.
Shannon, question about any limitations to serving or working for an organization that pursues work with both the city of San Antonio and CPS- that pursues work with both the City of San Antonio and CPS Energy. Can you explain a little bit on, on that, if there is any?
Absolutely. It's a really good question. CPS Energy is one of the few entities where everybody in our entire community is one of our customers, is probably somehow connected, at least tangentially, to some of our vendors as well, because we do work all over the city. So the fact that you work for a company that currently or in the past has done work for CPS Energy for the City of San Antonio does not in and of itself prevent you from being a trustee. If you work for someone that currently or in the past, or if you would like to in the future, bid on business through our competitive RFP process, then I would disclose that in your application, so we can look at the work specifically. It will depend in large part upon the nature of work, the work, who awards the work, what's the amount of the work, and how does it interface with what the board duties are. So, again, if you work for an employer that gets their 100% of their work stream bought through contracts that routinely go to the board for approval, I was going to say, we'll have a lot more to talk about than if you work for a company that doesn't go through a process that requires board approval for that work and isn't influenced by the board's vote on that matter. A lot of it can be solved with disclosures and then rules about how we proceed going forward.
I had a question, kind of just stems from, I was a former councilwoman for the City of Bolverde, and it made me think, you know, we were, I don't want to say bombarded, but we were approached often by folks wanting to bring business in, you know, you could call them lobbyists, you can call them whatever you want, and wanted to meet with us and pick our brains about, you know, the feasibility of a project and whether or not, what we personally felt, if it would pass or not. I would assume, since this is a governing body of this magnitude, that folks on the, the Board of Trustees would be bombarded by folks like, I don't know, the Microsofts of the world, or whoever, coming in and wanting to win you over for, for service. Is that something that's going to be over, something that we should expect to see a lot of? And if there's a policy for that, or, I mean, we had an ordinance written to kind of address that, but just wanted to hear that.
So there, I think there's a couple of, a couple of things rolled up into one question. I think you absolutely should expect to be approached by stakeholders, whether it is for business or to provide input on a policy, policy decision that the board is expected to make. So yes, I think it absolutely should be expected. I think it occurs all of the time. I would say that our trustees take varying approaches of how and when they sit down with various stakeholders to understand what their concerns are. We do have a number of policies that allow our trustees to direct those stakeholders to the right process. So for instance, if a large data company were coming to town and wanted to build a data center and wanted to talk to a trustee about the viability of the project, we absolutely have a team that does that. And I would say, again, allowing for different styles, the, the standard approach has been to direct, introduce themselves to that person and to direct them to the process that we go through. We do utilize a competitive bidding process, and there are rules for how and when we engage with folks if a request for proposals is out or not, that we, that we give trustees the information to direct them through the right process. But I think that it is absolutely one of the most demanding aspects of this position is, you are in the public view, you are a trustee for CPS Energy, and you're absolutely the people that all of our stakeholders will go to, to give their input on projects, policies, and everything in between. Again, thank you guys so much for your time. I had a couple of follow-up issues, so I want to get contact information, and I believe we got contact information, so I can get you the follow-up information. This will be on our website, recorded. And I think Kathy, did you have any other?
Depending if they overlap you. Our team put together some grab-and-go snacks. We know we did this over the lunch hour. We did that intentionally to try to allow for people to come in during a break if they had, you know, work conflicts and such. So along the back foyer area, you'll see some grab-and-go snacks. Feel free, they are there for you. And again, our customer response unit team is out there as well. They have a table if you're interested in learning a little bit more about those programs.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your time. So, so appreciate it. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. You.